Good afternoon, everyone. This is the May 5th edition of the Dayton Commission on Disability Monthly Meeting. It is now for twenty-three, twenty-three. We are seven minutes early because of commitments that several members have, and I appreciate everybody understanding that and working with it. This is not our norm to start early. I'd like to begin with standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. We'll do the introductions if we could next. I'll start with myself. My name is Jonathan Gale. I am the Disability Coordinator for the Town of Dayton and the Chair of the Commission on Disability.
I'm Ken Bichico. I'm the person for the Board of Selectmen, the nonvoluble member.
Kevin Smith, member and on the phone.
Nicole Mello attending virtually.
I meant Zoom, I'm sorry. And on the phone, I guess, whichever. So I'm going to ask Ken if he would, as he's done before, to read the agendas and go through it. I think this is, it's a fairly short agenda seemingly, but just just things that I think we should cover.
So agenda item number four, old business. First one is is a review of the middle school ramp project.
So since, as I told everyone last month, there were a few little things to be finished in the ramp. We did receive notice that from the person who was working on the ramp along with the school department, those items have been cleared up and finished. So at this point, as far as we are concerned, the ramp is finished for the school as well as the other door exits are finished as well, and they're as, they're as smooth as we can get them at this point. They've been graded as much as we can get at this point. Someday in the future, they may have to be formally redone when there's a massive reconstruction project for the school. But for now, they are completed and we can cross that one off. It won't appear on the agenda again as finished.
Next, I just update on MOD project grant status.
Project grant status, Kevin, feel free to chime in here with me or Ken too. The grant status is that the lavatories at the town hall, the construction has started. The men's room is ongoing and should be completed in about the next week. This is on the upper level. And then the lower level, the men's room will be temporarily downstairs and they'll start on the women's room for that. Counter space in those areas as well, which were not directly part of this project, but linked to it are pretty much completed now. The walkway, the new walkway for the town hall has now also been completed. It's been recreated at the base of it where the rail pad is as well. It's been moved and seated. I will stick with this for one part for a minute because one of the things that did come up yesterday morning at the town department meeting, manager's meeting, by a couple of folks raised a question mark as to whether we could eventually put a fence or railing, I'm using the word fence deliberately, or railing along the walkway because some people who have different types of devices are walking or walk with a cane, felt that they still needed that kind of support. And then as somebody else said, well, there is still a slant there. It's still a slight grade. And what happens in the winter if it's iced up and so forth, which I think is a fair point. So it's something that we can all revisit collectively together. I'm also going to reach out to our building commission to see what we can do and what we want to do with it and then see what costs would be as well, perhaps propose something to the board of selectmen. My personal thought is that because we're well within grade, we may want to think of something along the line of a fence, a wooden fence or wooden railing that more fits the decor, if you will, or the the area around than putting a metal, a metal railing, but it's something we could think about. The walkways for the parks, I'm going to ask Kevin to talk about that one.
I think we had mentioned it in our prior meeting that the courts were completed at the same time that the walkway to Newtown Hall was completed. The highway department is currently working on Lane Field. I expect that to be completed hopefully tomorrow. And then once that's completed, they're going to move up the street to School Lane and start the excavation, forming and concrete work up there. So I'm hoping weather pending and highway department availability wise, that in two weeks that all the parks projects will be completed.
As far as the new website, the the team for the town involved in doing the the new website had our first meeting yesterday afternoon with the new vendor, our first formal meeting, and they presented five looks to us for the for the site, which of course I can't see. We discussed it. We're going to have a very tight timeline for this entire project because there are so many aspects to it. What I'm going to do though, because this is visual in nature and I want to make sure that all of us are involved, I'm going to share with each of you after this meeting the email that I received yesterday from Leanne, who is going to be the point person with the company doing this. And the reason I'm going to share the email is because there are five views into what the website would look like in the homepage and so forth and how it would look visually. I can't see it visually, so rather than just rely on the others because it's also important for persons with disability and where things are located, I'd like to get the opinion of each of you before I go back to Leanne and say which of these five I recommend. I know what the others recommend or think, but I'd like to get eyes that I don't have on it from us as well. Anybody has an objection to that, please feel free to let me know and I will not share. I'm sure this is fine to share, but I'll let Leanne know that that's what I'm doing too and the other members so that they're, they know that I'm doing that. With regard to that, the one thing that we did talk about, which is a question I had is when a person first goes to the new website, I'm hoping that on the homepage, there will be a button or something that indicates accessibility so that a person knows right where to go if they need to have to make accessible changes for size, for font size, for lighting, et cetera, et cetera. So that was one of the questions we asked yesterday and they're supposed to get back to us on where that would be exactly so we can note it. But we started the process of the new website. And that's pretty much for now, that's where the the update is on the on the grant.
No, um, Old Town Hall, the ramp to the stage and the railing, I believe, is scheduled for installation on May 30.
It's actually been moved up. It's scheduled to start probably next week.
Even better.
Jim said that the company who is doing a contract contacted him and sent the email and said that they had openings earlier. So he expects the whole project will take about a week or so. Activities will still go on over there, but we should have that ramp completed in about a week once they start.
Next agenda item is the James Briggs.
Kevin, you want to talk more about the garden because you've been much more involved than I have.
Not like, oh, I love it, God.
Yeah, we're Ken, we're Ken.
Nicole, we were all, we were all there Saturday. Kevin, Kevin had moved the those two ADA compliant beds on his own. So they were already set up. We filled in the beds and Kevin's also did some of the landscaping around it, the stone dust, he leveled it a little better. He put some of the mats down between the the ramp and the the beds and we, and he Kevin decided to put two of the beds that we had some on the spot near where the these raised, the twenty to thirty inch raised beds are so that somebody in a wheelchair would not fall off because there is a drop in this level, but then it would be a drop. So they would actually hit the other raised bed, which is good, I think, the wheelchair, the raised bed. Nicole helped out and she was actually there longer than I was. I left about maybe ten thirty when the kids started doing some of the planting, but all the raised beds were filled with compost and so.
Kevin or Nicole, was there anything either of you want to add specifically? You were there or any thoughts about it?
I don't have anything about it other than it was, it was a really great day. It was great to see everyone come out and work together. It was great to see the kids get out there and plant stuff. I ended up bringing my son and he, you know, nobody wants to wake up that early, but afterwards he just had such great things to say about it. So I think it was just such a great thing for the community.
I was just being fresh out of the, didn't want to talk.
No, I, I have, I have to say that Kevin, on behalf of the town and the COD did enormous amount of work to make this come to fruition for those, for those beds on on Sunday.
Yeah, I can give just a kind of brief description. So it's
If you would.
Part of it, what happened was the original grade that we needed to start with was where the, make the entry gate is that leads to the ramp to the shed. So that was kind of our high point of, and we needed to be leveled from that point and beyond the raised beds. So we'd have a flat working surface for the mats. So what happened was the original grade tapered off quite a bit. So we adjusted the the two raised beds. And then like Ken had mentioned, we moved to the beds to kind of create a little bit of a retaining wall. Then I also constructed an additional retaining wall for the other portion of it so that we could make that grade all level. Mr. Ferry is going to supply some more stone dust because there's a little bit more infill that needs to be done. And then the rest of the mats can go down. It's probably forty percent, the mat is probably forty percent complete, but we can't completely traverse the the ADA beds as of right now, but hopefully, you know, by midweek next week, that will all be completed. So that way that whole area is completely accessible.
Thank you to all of you for doing an incredible amount of work. It's my understanding that the two larger raised beds, one of them is filled with carrots and the other one is filled with potatoes. So I know we all look forward to seeing that be able to be cultivated later in the summer or early in the fall. Next.
July ninth, I find some rec, firecracker.
So what I wanted to to get a sense of from Kevin, since your coordinator is Parks and Rec, is how you envision things being set up, how much space we're going to have and I really would like to try and all have us really between now and our next meeting focus on things we can do besides just have a table and so forth, so that we can really get people to be involved and want to come over and check us out.
So you can, well, we're going to set up the same way we did last year where the committees, commissions and other groups will be, you know, surrounding the that backside of the track coming off the, you know, the ramp, we'll call it. I'm not holding anybody to really stamp because we have quite a bit of room. You saw last year, I think we took up the whole backstretch of the track, but we certainly could spread out if needed. So depending on what activities certain groups want to do, we can, you know, spread people out based on that. I'm more like taking like, I'm not going to tell a group what they can and can't do at their table. It's more like, tell me what you're going to do and we'll adjust accordingly and make sure that everybody has enough space.
Do you know what other organizations or groups are going to be there as relates to anything disability so that worth reaching out and trying to coordinate?
So as of right now, Co-op did send in their their form to attend. I'm sure that and it's I'm hoping that we can get to the point where we can have some representation. I'm hoping that we can have some people from the best buddies group. Actually too, I might reach out even though it's kind of outside of the school, maybe some of the student representatives from the high schools best buddies program could come kind of set up with the citizens chapter folks and kind of you know, be able to mingle themselves and do a little bit of outreach together. So and I'm, I'm going to try to set up just like we did last year where we keep like-minded groups together for the most part.
Okay, we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
So but as far as anything like kind of COD related, that's only definite right now, I think, is Co-op.
Okay. Obviously, I mean, from my perspective, again, I'm going to bring things related to blindness to put on the table. I'd like to set up an obstacle course again. There were a handful of people that did that last year and also now that we have the grass mats, I think also like to be able to set up a wheelchair course.
I was just going to say now that Bella is in charge of, you know, the council and agents. So now we have, at least this year, the prime time is open. We have a contact that might be equipment that we can get our hands on to borrow to the event.
Exactly.
So it would be, it might be a little bit easier to expand on what you did last year.
I'm hoping that too. But I think also if there's any, you know, there's different types of disability we can have information about or have people there to answer questions about or especially in interactive games, if there's kind of interactive games that are easier for persons with disability to play or that people think the public might be interested in or kids games that are, you know, field, even if it's a field game, since we have some space. If we can put this together so that we can etch this in stone at our next meeting in June and then plan it out in terms of space and everything like that.
Know what else might be available at that time is that we could set up down there because it would be good to explain to us if it comes in is the augmented of communication board.
Oh, that would be great, yeah. That would be awesome to have one of them up there.
So what kind of, I'll reach out and see. I would, I actually expected it to be here by now, but I haven't seen it. So but that would be something kind of different that would be a good learning experience for folks.
A very good experience for folks. I'm sure people would ask questions about it. So any other thoughts about July 9th yet? Anything else? Anybody wants to share any ideas?
No.
Nope.
Well, that's such a, that's, I think that's a tough one because like, so obviously I'm pretty busy that day.
Yeah.
I know, I don't know. Nicole, are you going to represent Co-op?
I don't know because the Florida Health had talked about one of our meetings about, they brought it up and we hadn't decided if we were going to have a booth. So I, I'm not sure.
Good.
Well, I would like them to. We haven't discussed it yet, but I would, if, if I don't, if I'm not at that, then Co-op, it sounded like they're actually going to send like their own person this year other than me because we have like a better HR person and she'll be at that. But I do have somebody that reached out to me from Co-op that is interested in the best buddies. And if we wanted to have a table for that, I could talk to her about sitting at that and talking to people about best buddies. She's somewhat familiar with it and she's also she's the, the program manager for the program that has these individuals. So I mean, she's, she's really excited about it. She's emailed me twice about it, volunteering. So she just doesn't want to be a best buddy. But she wants to help in some way.
Which is perfectly fine.
Nicole, are you, could you send her name and email to me and Kevin? And then I know Kevin, if you want to reach out to her, great. If not, I'll reach out to her. It's up to you.
I'll reach, I'll reach out to her.
Yes. So we'll leave it to Kevin to reach out to her, but if you could just send it to both of us so that we have it on our radar.
Yeah, no problem.
Awesome. Thank you. I know I will be there certainly on July 9th. Kim will be there as well. One of my daughters may be able to come and help out as well. And my son Jeffrey may be able to help. So I'm going to kind of get some family members to step up and help too. And I'm going to ask a few other people in the community. I think if they can, if they can help as well. And our next item?
Language and car services for the annual town meeting.
So we talked about this a little bit last time and I was just asking everybody to think about it. Any thoughts here at all, whether we want to?
Well, I think we were going to explore availability and pricing.
The price, the pricing I've already looked into is, it depends on how it goes. It's about forty dollars per half hour for interpretive services, but you have to have two interpreters because they spell each other every thirty minutes.
Forty dollars.
So we're talking eighty dollars an hour.
Eighty dollars.
And that's, and that's, that's for sign language services. We don't have to have cart services. Cart service isn't add-on. And that's where you have a big screen and they type it in in a shorthand type of system and it comes out in words, similar to watching something in audio description on TV. So we don't have to have the cart services. We don't also have to have the interpretive services. I think that we have some money in the budget, we can use it. And I personally think that it sends a message to the community unless the, you know, community, what is that? And, you know, some people are going to watch it, some aren't. They're not in the middle of the stage. They're off to the side. You know, we may have to arrange ahead of time depending upon the lighting on the stage. They may need a spotlight on them. So we can arrange that for lighting purposes as well. But I personally think it's a good idea, but I wanted to get the feedback from the rest of you before I go ahead and potentially book it and look into the lighting and so forth for it.
So how does that work? Do we wait for a request for that or?
Normally we would, normally we would, there's, well, there's two ways to do it. Normally, if it's a special meeting, like a small group meeting or a small committee or commission meeting, we will wait for a request. We can also wait for a request for a town or special time meeting, or we can simply say it's provided and have it. The only issue with saying it's provided and have it is that once we do it, it might set a precedent. And we don't also want to run the risk realistically of somebody coming to a special time meeting or something next year like that saying, where is it? You had it before. Why don't you have it now, correct? Without, without an ask. So if we do it, we may be starting a precedent, but it may also invite others to come to the meeting who don't want to self-identify otherwise.
Double edged sword, so to speak.
I mean, if we want to take it under advisement still, we can, but I think and I could tentatively put a placeholder on it with the powers that be just to get it on the calendar and then we can make a final decision at our next meeting. Oh, no, we can't because, because it's too close.
Right. Um, I don't know. I have some mixed thoughts about this. I always like, I always feel like I want to lean towards being conservative with using our budget because our budget is miniscule. I think, and this is just an opinion, but if it went before the border selection, it'd be tough to get it, the cost to push through unless there was a need or an ask for it.
Yeah.
So that, that's kind of.
Well, the other, the other side of it is if we don't use some of our leftover, when I say our leftover dollars are unused dollars towards this, then what I would do because those dollars should be spent wisely anyway, I would want to potentially get something that we can have at the firecracker event for handouts at the table. For example, I'd like to have a magnet that can go on refrigerators, you know, that signify a couple of things about disability. So, you know, it might be, for example, the picture of somebody with a white cane, somebody with a wheelchair, somebody with sign language, you know, and then maybe a couple of phrases or something about autism or something, but a magnet with our email address and our phone number.
I think, yeah, outreach would be better, money better spent than something like this that we don't technically have an ask for.
And that way, if we, and I, I sort of agree with that in a way because if we do that for outreach, everybody can have something on their fridge or we can have a little, you know, maybe a little calendar, you know, there are calendars where each month has something about different disability. Things like that. And I, you know, I've seen other departments such as water and sewage and so forth, and other departments have handouts at their tables to give people for things. And I think that also attracts people to the table when you have here, take one of these. So if we decide now that potentially the way is not to go this year unless we have an ask, because that, then we have no choice, which I think is fine. Then I'd rather explore the options for what we can have for takeaways at the, at the firecracker event and have the answers to give you all back at our next meeting to have it ordered.
I mean, I personally think that'd be makes more sense to have something to provide to the community, every member of the community at the firecracker event to provide a service that we're not sure that we necessarily need.
Okay.
I agree with Kevin.
So we'll, we'll put that idea on hold unless we get a formal request from somebody who has a disability and needs that type of service. And instead I'll come back with our next meeting with several ideas of what we want to order so we can get an order and right away to get it in time for the firecracker event and cost as well for numbers and cost. And if I can have samples of what, what they have, I'll have that with me as well.
Yeah, as a result of advertising people, magnets or whatever, we may get that ask, the future date for future meetings, which is okay. If we get somebody requests it, we need to follow through with it.
Yeah.
But at this point, no requests. Again, what you're saying, Jonathan, that if we did do it, there may be more people show up at the meetings because they know that we have that service. But I think by advertising it and at the firecracker event, people may approach you on it or whatever, but we'll let them know it. It would be available if people wanted those services. So I think I agree, we should not be doing something for this annual town meeting, but we may be doing it for future meetings and that's fine with me.
Okay.
If it happens.
Thank you. Next.
Next is request for ADA equipment forms.
So I made a draft form. Justina was unavailable yesterday afternoon and today just to clean it up for me. So I, I said I was going to make a draft for you guys to have. I'll have to have it for you either later tonight or tomorrow. You'll get it.
I thought that was my job, my job.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
Oh, good. Because I didn't do, now I don't feel bad. Okay, well, it's my, it was my job. So I do.
Okay.
But I will get it to you so we can look at it in the meantime, between now and next meeting. And if anybody has any suggestions, please send them to me so we can tweak it. And then next meeting, hopefully we have one that we can formalize.
Is that in Dropbox now?
Not yet. No, it will be tonight. It will be later tonight or tomorrow Dropbox.
Now, my, my thing was the do's and don'ts of the grass mats and that I haven't got around to.
Yep.
Yeah. Can't believe it's been a month.
I mean, the, the grass mats will be something that's going to be in the, in the, in the request for equipment that they can request as, you know, one of the things that's in there. But having said that, the do's and the don'ts yet, if you want to work on that, want to get that together. Because we talked about how they were going to get it, pick it up, deliver it, drop it off, take care of it.
Right. It's just more care and more care, responsibility.
Yes. You know, all that stuff. Yes. Thank you. And next?
Next item is on the new business, elementary, middle school events, activities, workshops.
So I had the, the privilege of going to the PTO meeting this past Tuesday night and telling the PTO who we are, what we're about. Give them our overall mission in terms of what we are here for in town. And what we talked about as well were two, two possible things. One is when school starts organizing Disabilities Day or Disability Awareness Day for the kids and the teachers and parents if they want to participate. And we would set it up so that they were all different types of disability represented, as many as were able to represent it, but make it interactive, again, similar to firecracker event, so that we would teach kids how to do things, let them participate, let them try things. The PTO was psyched about it, said they were very interested, would like to pursue it. So I'm going to reach out to the PTO with a formal suggestion that we do it, see if they would like to designate one or two people to work with us on it and put it together. And of course, working with the school and the principal and so forth as well to make that happen. The other thing that we talked about was putting together a series of workshops through organizations like the Center for Children with Special Needs and the Federation for Children with Special Needs as well, so that we can teach parents how to understand IEPs and five oh four plans, what their rights and responsibilities are, what are the responsibilities for the school department? What do you do if you're not happy with the plans? All these different things are, I'm thinking of a series of probably three workshops. It would be ninety minutes and two hours each. We would not be conducting the workshops, but we would bring in folks in Federation for Social Specialties to do it. There's no charge to bring in, to have them come in and do these workshops, but it would solve on a lot of parents with the information they need to know. There was a significant thought felt that this is long overdue, needs to be done because there's no other committee right now in place to do anything like this through the school systems and the district that this would be welcomed and that a lot of parents would want to participate in something like this. So we made it clear, we cannot represent individual parents. And that's not our responsibility or our goal. We cannot get involved in their private matters with the family and the school department, but what we can do is provide them the resource. So by bringing in the workshop and arranging the workshop, we're providing the resource. So the plan potentially would be to work again with the PTO. The school department doesn't necessarily have to be involved in this, although it would be nice to have them involved. They would be involved otherwise potentially for space. If they can't provide us the space, they would like to look at alternative space, maybe Old Town Hall or something like that. But maybe in late August and then two in early September so that we can get it done early in the school year before IEPs and five oh fours really begin.
Well, I think it'd be important to at minimum invite the special ed director and the other, you know, heads of the special ed departments from each school.
Absolutely.
And hopefully they'll attend so that everybody's on the same page.
I would like to have them attend or even send a representative to be part of every discussion. I've briefly reached out to them already when we even preliminary talked about this about a month ago. And special ed department was interested in the process. They thought it was important for parents to be aware, at least that's what they expressed through Kristen, so that parents would be more empowered because from their perspective, you know, in some respects, more parents know, the more they're aware, the more it makes the job of understanding what everybody's role is easier.
I think with this particular subject too, it's important for us to try to find someone who is still involved in some way with what seems to be our defunct CPAC and bring and use this as a bridge to bring that back to life because you certainly do not want to get into the weeds of IP questions because you might as well become the, quit your job as the ADA coordinator for the town of Dayton and become the special ed director of the school district because that's what's going to happen is quick. And I know this from experiences when we get somebody Like, and I know this from experiences, when we get somebody who has knowledge, we are gonna lean on them. If somebody's willing to answer the questions. That's gonna be our go-to person when I'm gonna, you know.
I think we did our best, when I was at the meeting the other night, I did my best to make it clear. That I cannot be the go-to person for individual questions on what you can do and what you can't do, because it wouldn't be appropriate. And that's giving. It's gonna be asked but not answered, I guess.
Right.
Say, and that's.
Right, well, that's why I say, you know, be cautious, because you, you know, we don't wanna make it appear like that's.
No, and I wouldn't be, remember, I would not be doing these workshops.
Yeah.
These workshops would be done by an outside agency. Who is professionally able to answer it at that level, who these parents will then have as their go-to, hopefully. As well as other local agencies in Taunton or Fall River who specialize in this as well, who are nonprofits. On the local level, family and children services who can provide resource for, for these families.
Cuz my fear is even for like the PTO is gonna, they're gonna get residual questions. How can, who can we call to help with this? And like, the PTO certainly isn't gonna have.
They're gonna say, call Jonathan.
Right, and that's what I mean, and then.
Jonathan is gonna say, call, so, so. And that's just the way it's gonna have to be.
Right, and I think that's why it's important to try to get somebody from CPAC back in, because that's where this should be coming from.
And then we also let them know, we'd like to begin visiting the schools, both of the schools. And doing more extensive looks at everything ATA within the schools and outside the schools. For example, the playground, you know, we know Kevin's involved in talking to them already about that. So we offered as well to potentially help them look at other resources and grants if we can towards the playground. Talked about a little bit about, again, walking through the schools and looking at anything that they think they have a question mark or anything that we think there's a question about. And setting up a time to do that. So all in all, it was a good meeting. I think we were well received. And as a coordinator, I can say I look forward to us working with the schools and beginning to, to provide some resources.
Can I just add in, circling back to doing activities with the students? I had found something online that was like a really great packet of different activities to do within the classroom. For a variety of different disabilities. I'll try to put it into. The drive, I haven't used it in a while, so I don't know if I remember how to put things in there, but if I can't, I'll just scan it and email it. But I thought it was really great. A lot of the, there are a lot of classroom-like activities. I think it would be great to share with the students.
That sounds awesome. Even if you can't put it in there, Nicole, if you can just scan it or, you know, send, send links, then. I can take care of it with Justina too, and we can pull it together. And maybe some of those handouts would even be useful. If there's handouts that explain the activities to have. In July, because maybe there's some things that the parents might be interested in thinking about doing with somebody with their kids at home.
Okay, I didn't even think about that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. Next.
I think you covered already is the main visits to PTO.
Yes.
Six community reports of time permits, best buddies update.
So still with best buddies and still. Volunteer or participation forms have been slow. Nicole, I'll probably check in with you maybe tomorrow and see, I'm fairly certain it must be someone from the co-op program. But I did get one new application of an individual with ADD, so I'm assuming. That it's from the program, but I just will double check, just so. Cuz I'm not sure if it.
So last week, I went to the Redemption Center. I dropped off a bunch of flyers and asked if they could pass them out. And then I also went to one of the day programs and I gave them a bunch of flyers and asked if they could pass it out, even though. We've already had it on social media. I think sometimes if you have it in hand, it's just easier. To do it, to look at the flyer, scan the QR code and go through that. So I'm disappointed that I only, we only have one, but we are looking for some of the individuals in our house. Me and my, my boss are gonna sign them up because they are good. They're great candidates for this. Just our houses are really struggling with staff, so if. I can just go and do it, or she can just go do it, we'd be happy to bring them to whatever event. What's like that to get them involved, because I think they'd be good candidates. We're just short on people able to do these things.
Well, thank you for helping to spread the information. Is it, yeah, like you said, sometimes I think, yeah, that having that physical paper is definitely an easier way to get, you know, certain individuals involved. Cuz. And we've seen it, like, the social media reach really hasn't been. That great, to be honest with you, like typically, like, you know, when I share posts about certain things, and it's like I try to share it to. Every town-related page, it usually gets a ton of traction, and for some reason, like, it just hasn't taken off, but it's like, I don't wanna, you know. Can only flood social media with so many different things. At a time, and I don't like things to get like overshadowed, one thing to get overshadowed by another, but I think it's been. Right around when we had our last meeting was the last time I shared something, so I'll do it again just to, to help, and I think. Having the, I have all the graphics that co-op has used for the program too, which were really awesome. So I'll help to kind of share those, you know, use those to kind of do it in another social media post and try to get some more word out there.
No, it, it's hard, I think. And I hear what you're saying about the response, but, and I think part of it is that. This is one of those areas where unless you have a family member who is developmentally delayed. Or you work in the field very often, the, the thought of working with a person who has a developmental disability is daunting and scary. Because people don't know what to expect or how to involve themselves or what to do, how to act, how to react. So I think that sometimes, you know, there's, there's not a such moment as those of us who are comfortable in the field think there should be. But I think it's harder to get people to feel comfortable becoming involved.
Well, I can do, as far as public, you know, just general public outreach too, there's a ton of good. Videos from best buddies like international that, you know, show these relationships live, you know, so, you know. That might be helpful to show that it's like, you know, it's a normal friendship.
It's a normal friendship, and maybe, maybe it makes sense to post.
Yeah, so kind of share some of that, how the program works and what these relationships.
Yes.
Or friendships look like might be helpful as well. I mean, just like anything else, Rome wasn't built in a day.
Sticking real quick with this, with the justice, so I don't forget it in my head, the butterfly, and you mentioned that a minute ago, Nicole. I know in the school system, you get the word out for a lot of things, they send email blasts out, but do kids still bring home paper flyers? To their parents' announcements?
Yes.
I'm wondering if it's worth us putting together a paper announcement about who we are, our contact information. Best buddies, just putting it in one sheet, trying to design a one-pager.
No, I'm gonna tell you right now, no. The PTO does it all the time, their newsletter.
Yeah.
Not to like, you know, throw the PTO under the bus. I won't read it, cuz there's too much, it's too, it's too much.
Okay.
Like, I think these things need to be like. Event or, you know, subject-specific.
Yeah.
Short, sweet, grabs your attention. You start flooding this paper, and then you're like, I, I know. Me and most of the people I talk to, like, we, we won't read it just because it's. If I wanted to read the newspaper, I'd go buy the good stuff.
Okay.
Not to be like fresh about it, but, yeah. Alright, I mean, and Nicole, you know what it's like to have kids come home with their folders. It's like enough to sort through. The homework and this, and this is coming up, and that's the colored ones coming up, and this.
Yeah, I make them into paper airplanes.
Yeah.
Okay, point was that, I'm sorry. Next, review of town policies. So I mentioned last time that I was gonna start reviewing policies. Again, I'm waiting to. Work with Justina and put some, some. Changes to what I've done with her, cuz right now she has track lines for me to look at things and vice versa. I didn't find too much. It's mostly really just about making sure the language is in there, and there are a few places where the language needs to be cleaned up. That's it, so I'm hoping between now and next meeting, I can send. All three of you drafts to look at so that we can do some approvals for our June meeting. I'll just leave it there for now.
Yeah, so I'm supposed to be working with you if you wanna sit down.
Yep.
Once you've done it.
Yeah, you're, you're the first person to get it anyway.
Yeah.
Cuz I need, I need you to tell me this looks good or doesn't, not only visually, I mean, otherwise, yes.
Next agenda items, review and approve minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So we have a new clerk, by the way. His name is Kevin. I don't know if he's here or not. Who has produced a couple of meeting minutes to look.
Well, that's actually, does it matter? Can, we actually have meeting minutes from March third and April fourteenth? Can we?
We can only vote on the.
We can only vote on the.
The one that.
Okay.
I mentioned, yes, and I didn't, also, I'm gonna make a motion that we go for that one, and then in the next meeting, I'll put those in there with this one. For the March one, if that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, we already have them, so.
We have, yeah, exactly. So there is the minutes from April fourteenth, and I'm going to make a motion. To approve the minutes from April fourteenth. Do we have a second?
I second that, Nicole Mello.
Nicole has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
And stepping down to vote, Jonathan, aye. Unanimously passed, and we'll make sure that we do the March ones along with the May ones at our next meeting.
Next agenda items is set the next three meeting dates. If we stay with this. First Thursday of the month will be June second, July seventh, and August fourth.
Is everyone okay with these dates?
I'm sorry, what was the date? I couldn't hear.
June second, July seventh, and August fourth.
Yes, those are good.
Kevin?
Let me just double check.
Yep, I'm going in my hand. Ken?
I'm okay with those dates, yeah.
Okay, and those dates work for me too. So remember those dates. And next, do we have?
We have a chairman, but we should be putting on, I know tonight it's only, but today it's only us, but we should have public input.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was asking, you know. So before we go to public input though. I wanted them to know, oh my gosh, I'm having a great freeze, I'm sorry. I would like us to, to try to refocus, we can be done more focused for new members. The three of us are at every meeting, and that's great. But I also think that we need to find other ways to reach out and get a few other residents in town involved in COD. So I know we do announcements here and there. I know that the board stuff announces it and so forth periodically as well. But does anybody have any other ways in our Facebook page? Does anybody have any other ways we could get new members or suggestions involved? You know, a lot of people say maybe. But nobody stepped up to the plate yet, and I think it would be great to have some new blood as far as other members and other voices. Rather than just us.
I just brought this kind of a similar, a different subject, but it's, it's relative. At the PTO meeting, I was saying the best way. They were talking about spreading awareness or something, is we, you can post on social media all you want, you can. But the best way to do it is like word of mouth, it's like, it's when you're out talking to somebody and they say, oh, you know, so-and-so, yeah, my family member. Has a disability, or I have a disability, it's like, well, we have this commission. It's like you just kind of, it's gotta be mindful of that conversation.
Oh, always.
You know. Like, hey, if you'd like to help make a difference.
I agree.
I, I, I think that's the best way to actually get somebody to do it. Cuz I think whenever you have, you start posting stuff, for the select and make it like the committee, you know. You guys are doing the highlight, highlighted groups.
Right, and the problem is, we went through all twenty committees and just list them, and they need one member, and they need two member, and I think people after a while just.
Yeah, they just.
Yeah. But maybe at the firecracker event, if people come to the table.
Yeah.
We should, you know, they talk about my son, my brother, whatever.
And we did that last year. We had a signup sheet. We got four or five people, and then we reached out to them, asked if they were still be interested, and we never grabbed responses back.
What you've gotta do, I think what we're gonna do is, any, all committees should keep, and they don't need to print out a ton, cuz you're not gonna get a ton of people. But the actual volunteer application form. It's like, you gotta think about it, like, you know, like Anderson Windows comes to your house. One of those, be like, you know, you're gonna, you know, really talk, get it, something, you know, signed, sealed, and delivered right then and there.
Yeah.
You know, might be helpful.
That's a thought.
Handful of winter on the clipboard.
Yeah, and let them walk, if you let them walk away with it, you're never probably not gonna see.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
I think Jonathan, like, you go into the PTO, things like that. I mean, how I found out about it was Jen came to Cub Scouts and talked about. She was actually just talking about town government, and she actually mentioned you guys, and that's how I found out about it. So just trying to get involved with other areas and just mentioning it, you eventually will find somebody.
Yeah, I don't know, though. I mean, how much more stuff can the four of us get involved in?
I know, I know, I can't think of anything else.
We have our real lives.
What's a real life?
Says that the other person in this group is so nice, but we can't seem to draw anybody in. I don't know what's going on here.
True, and we do need to start screaming and yelling, that could be the answer. You know, in a positive way, help, help, help. Do we have anyone else in the line with us who has any public input they wanna share or not? Any other thoughts for anything at all? Anything that anybody else wants to bring up as new business before we adjourn or?
Nope.
So it's gonna be postponed?
Yes.
Bring Ginkgo Biloba for the next. Might be the atmosphere again.
Yeah.
Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn at five ten.
I'll second that, Nicole Mello.
Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, Kevin?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Stepping down, Jonathan, aye, thank you very much. Nicole, enjoy Cinco de Mayo.
Oh, I will. Have a good night, you guys.
Have a good night.